Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council's special meeting tonight. Council thanks you for being part of your city government. At meetings, this city council takes formal action on items, holds public hearings, and conducts other business of the city. Again, you'll note that I am not Mayor Barajas. Though she is online, she has asked me to go ahead and run the meeting tonight while she attends virtually. So following Governor Inslee's statewide mask mandate, facial masks are required to be worn at all times when in council chambers. If any individual is unable to comply with this order, then the meeting will be recessed until compliance is met. If compliance is not met and the individual refuses to leave the chambers, then the meeting will either recess and reconvene only virtually or be adjourned. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-wa.gov/agenda. Please note that the city council meetings may be accessed through GoToWebinar. This meeting is also being televised live on PSC TV, Channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, and YouTube channel. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. And lastly, the public may submit their comments and requests by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. So this evening, we'll start with a special meeting and then go into our regularly scheduled workshop meeting. So with housekeeping taken care of, I ask the clerk if he's called the roll.
Council members Campos.
President.
Milton.
Yeah.
Serrano.
President.
Torres. Mayor Protem Maloney.
President.
And Mayor Barajas. So six accounted for, Mayor Protem.
Thank you kindly. And with that, I'd ask you to please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you for that. And then with that, we'll move on to item four, hearings and council actions on ordinances and resolutions relating thereto. Item A, public hearing and ordinance for the Oberding and Farm 2005 LLC and Director White.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem and City Council. As you can see by the screen, this issue involves an annexation. It's north of Burns Road and east of Road 68. It's very large by annexation standards. It's just a little bit under 600 acres. The annexation itself is relatively straightforward. The zoning recommendation is still pending. The hearing examiner is expected to issue a final recommendation on that in February, and it will be coming back to council for the establishment of zoning in the second meeting in February or perhaps the first meeting in March. Staff wants to point out that this annexation is very important in providing development opportunities to accommodate Pasco's growth, both in the short and long term, and recommends council approval of the annexation ordinance.
All right, thank you, Director White. Before we conduct a public hearing, is there any comments or questions from council?
Yes, there is. Councilmember Torres, I do have to disclose that I do have a parcel property that's adjacent to the proposed annexation. I did speak with Attorney Ferguson, and he did make me aware that I will have to recuse myself from the zoning vote, but not from the annexation vote. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Serrano.
Just a quick question. Mr. White, is there any impact? I see this at least ends at the flight path, but it also looks like Zone 4 of the flight path extends through that. Will that have any impact on the zoning or future proposed uses?
Yes, it has impact on the zoning. There are several residential densities proposed in the zoning determination. The largest of those, the RS-20 zone, is proposed for the area that would be in conformance with the overlay zone for the airport.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we were considering that, and I'm sure, I figured we were, also that the owners of the property were aware of that.
They definitely are.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Serrano. A follow-up question for Director White. I seem to recall, gosh, several years ago when we were discussing this, the port made a presentation that was suggesting that the zoning there along that flight path is actually better suited for a higher-density residential because you expect a lower, more noise in apartment buildings and such, as opposed to a lower-density residential, which is typically a much quieter area. Can you speak at all real quick to that? I know this may not be relevant for this public hearing tonight, but interested.
Yes, and I don't, there isn't a direct relationship, as you stated, Mayor Protem, but yes, that was a topic of discussion. And in the meantime, between then and now, the property owners and the port have come up with a resolution to that issue by recording navigation easements for any property transactions that occur. So there'll be reports on title, or excuse me, conditions on title reports that describe that you will be experiencing airport noise, et cetera, possibly inconvenience, and that was a amiable solution for, on both parties' sake.
All right, thank you for that. Any other questions from council before we open the public hearing? All right, hearing done. I'll open a public hearing. And if any member of the public is interested in speaking on this matter, please feel free to come forth. I'll be making three calls for public comment. Does any member of the audience that would like to speak on this matter? Sir, thank you. Please state your name and for the record.
I will, thank you. Councilmembers, my name's James Carmody. I have worked with the property owners on this matter for what seems to be a better part of my adult lifetime. So it's good to be here, and it's good to be at this point of annexation of this property. We support the staff comments that have been made and the recommendation of staff. In answer to a couple of the other questions, the overlay district is in place, and it governs any development of the property. So you have a Zone 2 section that you can see was removed from the annexation area. Zone 4 would be subject to the overlay rules. There was, in addition, a negotiated arrangement with the port to place on the properties navigation easements notifying the public and the residents that it is an area of aircraft passage. We've worked a long time for this and would request your annexation, and then we'll come back and visit you with the zoning situation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak on this? Do we have anyone online that has signed up for public testimony? All right, with that, I'll give a second call. Any other member of the public in the audience tonight or online that would like to speak on this topic? And a third and final call, any member of the public. All right, with that, I'll close the meeting, and Mayor Barajas, if you want to make a motion.
Absolutely, Mayor Protem Maloney. I move to adopt ordinance number 4574 relating to annexation and annexing certain real property of the City of Pasco and further authorize publication by Submarion.
All right, we have a motion in front of us. Can I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Torres. Any further comment from council? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
I don't, please, that's not quite.
I'll ask staff, is there's a question of whether this requires a roll call vote? I'm seeing shaking of heads.
It's fine, it's public hearing.
All right, do we need to explore that further?
No, it's fine. I just wanted to confirm it didn't need one by statute or ordinance. It seems like when we do some of these hearings, we do have some roll calls, but I could be wrong, so we'll leave it as is.
All right, thank you, Mr. Serrano. All right, we'll move on to the next item here. We'll move on to Section 5, ordinances and resolutions not relating to hearings. Item A, an ordinance for PMC amendments in Title 25 zoning, increasing residential building capacities in regard to E2 SHB 1923. So interjection comments from Director White, or do we want to turn over to Mr. Gonzalez directly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I think I'll just turn it over to Mr. Gonzalez with the brief statement that, of course, you've seen this just a couple of weeks ago, so we're returning with some tweaks, I guess, that were expressed at the meeting two weeks ago.
Great, thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Good evening. And again, the two remaining components with House 1923 are with regards to removing the restrictions on what is commonly referred to as missing middle housing and increasing flexibility for accessory dwelling units. This is a table that's been shown at prior council meetings that describes the proposed changes associated with the missing middle component, and I want to point out that although the proposal increases flexibility, the development must still be in conformance with the comprehensive plan. And to address comments from the previous workshop presentation, staff has included the comprehensive plan density table into the proposed ordinance attached to the staff report this evening. That ordinance identifies each zoning district with the adopted numerical density ranges for each land use that each zoning district falls within. So this should ensure that there is no mistake or misinterpretation with the density ranges allowed in each zoning district. This is a slide that summarizes the primary changes for the allowance of accessory dwelling units, both attached and detached in the city. Again, this has been shown at prior council meetings as well, and I want to point out that in addition to these changes, staff has reached out to a local firm, assuming a positive recommendation this evening, to develop a user's guide for applicants and residents of the City of Pasco, builders, et cetera, to have a user-friendly document that can guide them through the ADU process. Many cities have designed and created these guidebooks, and they've turned out to be quite helpful, so we intend to develop the same document here for residents to have access to. Also thought it would be helpful, and hopefully these show up clear for all, but what, that it would be helpful to show a series of maps that demonstrate the proposal itself. So on the left is a dwelling unit distribution map. The yellow indicates single-family detached housing. Orange is multifamily, very limited. You can see today currently, and on the right side is the density distribution. That pink overlay you see is a buffered area of approximately a quarter mile around public transportation routes and public land uses such as schools, parks, et cetera. And the green undertones are the range of densities per acre on a lot-by-lot basis. I do want to point out that although the green signifies on a lot level higher density, overall, the densities across the city are centralized in central Pasco, at approximately eight units an acre in central Pasco. East Pasco is just over five units an acre, and the north of 182 is slightly above four, and the Riverview or West Pasco area is at two units an acre. This is a map that shows where multifamily or attached housing or missing middle is allowed today in Pasco, as you can see, again, centralized in central Pasco and along some of our primary corridors. This map in blue shows the scale of zoning districts that permit pending the zone and the specific location, the kind of units that would be permitted, again, with that buffer showing the change, I'm sorry, showing the associated lands within a public land use or public transportation route. Although that's a lot of blue, I'll point out that less than 73 acres are vacant in that blue portion. Not all those parcels have been vetted or evaluated for actual development feasibility, though. And this is just a simple graphic that shows the difference that the proposal would make in the city. Today, about 10% of the city residential lands allow multifamily or attached housing. This proposal would change that to 78%, so a pretty significant change. Just, again, House 1923 summary, it's just an option, not a mandate, implements the city's comprehensive plan, permits additional flexibility, and certainly increases housing options for residents of the City of Pasco. Thought it would also mention that between 2010 and 2020, the tri-cities had the second highest cost of a living increase for small and mid-sized metros in the United States of approximately 22,400 percent at a percentage level across all cities. That's higher than Olympia, Spokane, and even San Diego, California. I also want to point out that staff report includes letters of support from the Washington State Department of Commerce and also a letter of support from TRIDEC, the Tri-City Development Council, and as their president and CEO mentioned in the letter, that this proposal increases the flexibility for housing stock to meet the demand. And while adopting this code won't address all housing issues, it will be the first towards proactively addressing the demands for options in Pasco, keeping it a great place to live and work. So with that, I'll conclude this presentation and happy to answer any questions from council. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Gonzalez. And we have seen this a number of times, and just a couple of years, short years ago, this bill was passed, and we authorized staff to move forward with that. And that included, as I recall, some grant money from the state to allow us to do some of this options. Is that, my recollection serving correctly?
Yes, the city received approximately $41,000 to complete this effort, again, as an incentive with House 1923.
Great, thank you. With that, questions from council?
Yeah, a question.
Yes, Mr. Serrano.
Thank you. We often hear, as I recall, you know, we're projecting the growth from Amazon, some of these other things, the need for this middle market housing. Have we reached out to any of those employers to determine what type of housing their employees in these types of facilities typically reside in?
We have not had specific conversations with some of the larger employers, but we have had conversations with TRIDEC and the Port of Pasco. There has not been any specific indicator about the type of housing that would be, you know, most appropriate, just a lot of it.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure if we use that as part of our justification, and I know a lot of it has to do with HB 1923, that we're justifying our statements, right? You know, if we have a specific need, I mean, if all those people want larger single-family homes, then we'd end up rezoning to bare fruits of the market. I highly doubt that's the case, but, you know, I think it'd be wise to confirm what our needs are and what our proposed population influx will be. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Gonzalez? Thank you very much for the presentation, and I would ask the mayor to make a motion if she so sees fit.
Absolutely, Mayor Protem Maloney. I move to adopt ordinance number 4575, amending Title 25 of the Pasco Municipal Code zoning to increase residential building capacities per Washington State and gross second substitute House Bill 1923, and further authorize publication by Submarion.
Thank you for that. Here, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Councilmember.
Seconded by Councilmember Milton. Any other questions or discussion? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. All right, we'll move on to item B, resolution for ecology loan agreement for wastewater treatment plant, Phase 1. Director Worley.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council members. Thank you very much. This item is related to an ecology low-interest loan agreement. Council may recall, having seen this same loan agreement previously, we brought before council the design phase of the wastewater treatment plant improvements for both Phases 1 and 2, and we entered into an agreement with the State Department of Ecology to have a low-interest loan for the design phases as well. This is the companion construction for Phase 1. It is $22.26 million in 1.2% loan for 20 years. And I wanted to point out that we would not have been able to get this loan if it had not been for the fantastic work by our consultant, Murray Smith and Associates. They scrambled very, very quickly to prepare an entire design for the proposed improvement in a very short time period in order to meet the deadlines that were needed, in order to get ecology staff, engineering staff, to review the plans and provide their approval before the deadline for the loan agreement. And so I want to point that out. The ecology staff was fantastic to work with throughout this entire process. This has taken a while for this agreement to get to us, but that's because there have been some staff changes at ecology, and took a little bit of time to get this agreement pulled together. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much, Director Worley. Any comments or questions from council? All right, hearing done. Mayor Barajas, would you like to make a motion?
Absolutely, well. I move to approve resolution number 4144, authorizing execution of $22.26 million loan agreement from the Department of Ecology for the wastewater treatment plant, Phase 1 construction.
All right, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Torres. Any other comments or questions from council? All right, hearing done. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Director Worley. With that, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, item C, resolution declaring a declaration of local storm emergency. Director Ratke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the city council. Good evening, Zach Ratke, ACS director. On January 7th of this year, a significant storm system with wind moved through the Pasco area, brought gusts of more than 50 miles an hour. At approximately 4:30 that evening, staff was informed that Dock B at the Pasco Boat Basin had moved from its moorings due to the wind and was floating freely in the marina. Now, it wasn't posing a threat to the direct current of the Columbia River, but still floating enough to where it needed to be secured. Pasco facility staff, along with the Pasco Fire Department, who did the lion's share of the securing, secured the dock to the northern shore of the marina, and subsequently in the following days, Pasco facilities staff had secured a floating boom and buoy system around the floating, the loose dock to ensure that debris would not break loose into the river system. The damage has rendered really this historical asset unusable beyond any potential for repair. The required removal and replacement of the dock is necessary at a cost that's not secured in the budget at this time. The local declaration of an emergency allows the city to streamline the processes for procurement and permitting and expedite the removal of this unsafe structure, which poses a strong potential threat to equipment, property, commerce, and business interests down the river, as well as local, state, and federal infrastructure in the Columbia River system. We've estimated thus far that the emergency response was about $15,000. We're still accounting for time and money spent on this in case there's a significant reimbursement for these costs from the state or federal government. Replacement to the dock, similar to Dock A that was replaced a couple of years ago, is looking about $2.5 million. We're not asking for that at this time. What we're doing is asking for the emergency declaration in order to enable us to begin demolition or removal of Dock B, which is estimated at just around $78,000. So with that, I'll take any questions of council.
All right, thank you for that report, Director Ratke. Any questions from council? Councilmember Campos.
Councilwoman Campos, Mr. Ratke, usually in government workings, things take a little bit of time, and I just want to commend you. It seems like you've worked pretty expeditiously on this, and thank you for getting us these numbers so we can make the right call.
Yes, thank you. It was a very good team effort here by a lot of people on staff.
All right, thank you for that. Any other questions or comments from council? All right, hearing done. Mayor, would you like to make a motion?
Absolutely. I move to approve resolution number 4145, writing my emergency proclamation as subsequent emergency order number 2022-001 due to the January 7, 2022 windstorm in City of Pasco, Washington.
All right, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, seconded by Councilmember Campos. Any other discussion or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. All right, well, thank you for bearing with us to the special meeting agenda. We'll move on now to, well, adjourn the special meeting and reconvene into the regular workshop So I will skip all of the introductions and roll call, as we've already done so, and move directly to item 4, verbal reports from council members. Does any council member have any item for any meetings or things that attend on behalf of the city? Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Yes, last Wednesday, I attended the Ag Hall of Fame with my councilwoman Torres, and we had a good evening, I thought. Overall, a lot of, it was well-attended, but the best part of the evening was getting to see the Martinez family, which, there's a lot of them. We got to see Saul Martinez's family being recognized as pioneers in our community, and then we also got to hear one of his emotional speeches. So he was true to form. It was a good evening.
Great, thank you for that, and best of wishes to him. I hope he's doing well in his, I'm going to call it retirement, but I know he's still working a full-time job, so that's a stretch.
Yeah, I did talk to him, and he said he was super relaxed, and it was a different experience, so.
All right, thank you for that. Any other reports from council members? All right, hearing none. I'll move on to item 5, items for discussion. So we'll start with item A, Tri-City Dust Devils Season Recap. Director Ratke.
Yes, thank you once again, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of council. This evening, we just wanted to bring the management team of the Tri-City Dust Devils to give an update on the season and what's in store for the team, and thank the city council for support. So I believe Darrell and Brent are on the virtual meeting, and Darrell, I'll turn it over to you unless you want me to just start the intro.
If you want to go ahead and start the intro, Zach, that'd be great. Director Ratke, thank you very much for that, and thank you for assisting me tonight and moving the slides along. Mayor Protem and council members, thank you very much for this opportunity for us to chat with you tonight and talk about baseball, which is pretty exciting, and we're certainly excited to be here to talk about the 2021 season. We're going to kind of wrap that up here for you and kind of just talk how that went and kind of take you through a little bit of a journey of how we got there and the fact that we were able to even play games this year, which was pretty exciting. So 2021, Zach, you can go ahead and advance us here a little bit. Thank you. Baseball was back in 2021, certainly with the COVID situation that we all have had to endure. 2021... Twenty-twenty, with no season at all, was certainly a struggle and a tough pill to swallow for us and really a difficult situation that we were so excited to have baseball back here in twenty-twenty-one. Having fans, as you see some of these pictures, just having people in the ballpark and being able to do that safely and well right here in Pasco was pretty exciting. So being able to have baseball back at Geese Stadium was was a feat in the end of itself, starting with restrictions with twenty-five percent capacity when we first got games back going on May fourth, twenty-twenty-one. That was six hundred days since our previous pitch at Geese Stadium. So it was quite a, quite a day, quite a moment. Unfortunately, it was twenty-five percent capacity, but we were just fortunate and thankful to have the gates open, and it was pretty exciting. You know, having season ticket holders and fans that hadn't been to the ballpark in a long time, it's very similar to not seeing your family for a long time, not having people over, you know, not hosting Christmas for a couple of years. It's very, very similar in that sense that we got to have our family back at the ballpark, and it was very exciting to do so. We'll go ahead and continue on to the next slide. So our MLB affiliation, first of all, there's a huge thanks to the City of Pasco, the staff, and also the council for your part, your role in keeping baseball here in the Tri-Cities and specifically in Pasco. We couldn't have done it without you, and we are very excited that we were able to make that happen through a lot of hard work, a lot of proving ourselves and being able to show why Pasco is the right place for MLB to be involved and specifically for the Los Angeles Angels, who are now our partner, if we want to head to the next slide, are now our partner for the next ten years. So we are very excited that not only did we keep baseball here in Pasco, but we're doing so at least for the next ten years, and we think for many after that, through the MLB partnership and the partnership specifically with the Angels. So that is very exciting. That started this year. Again, it's a ten-year deal, and we're really excited about that. We previously were with the Padres and the Rockies. But each of those deals could have changed after two years, and now with that ten-year commitment, it's even a stronger partnership, and we're really excited about that and where it's, where it's heading. So we'll go ahead and continue on to the next, a little more kind of Angels and just Dust Devils news and kind of a little more of the twenty-twenty-one season. So again, affiliated with the Angels for the next decade. The Angels were very committed this year. They've had a lot of changes in their organization from the GM level to player development. In the draft this year, we didn't really know how it was going to go when it comes to being a short-season team before, which we were prior to the realignment and the new affiliation with Major League Baseball, and then switching over to high A, which is two levels higher and also full season. But with the draft, we were pleased to see that the ninth overall draft pick, Sam Bachman, came and joined us this year, which was really exciting. And somebody that we'll probably see in the big leagues in the next two to three years, which will be also a little more common for us as being in the high A level, we are also two levels closer to the major leagues than we were before. So that will be a very exciting piece to have even more Dust Devils than we have so far in the previous twenty years that we've been here. We'll even have more players now that made it to the big leagues, just being at that higher level. So very exciting to be at this spot, to continue being a strong part of this community, the Pasco community. We're very excited for kind of where we're heading. The twenty-twenty-two schedule is out. We are a total of a hundred and thirty-two games now in the full season. There's a schedule, thank you. A hundred and thirty-two games, sixty-six at home, so more opportunities now for our community to be able to come out and enjoy Geese Stadium and the Dust Devils, and we're really excited for that. If you want to go on to the next slide, just want to, again, we can't say it enough, thank you to the council, thank you to the staff with the City of Pasco. We truly believe that we have a great partnership with you all, and that is very important to us and our ownership group. And with that, I'm going to turn things over. Brent, if you have anything to add or want to give a comment?
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Darrell, Director Rakhai. Just a couple of quick points. One, if you, if you happen to be a baseball fan and are paying attention to Major League Baseball, you know that the owners have locked out the players at the Major League Baseball level, which may or may not go into effect their regular season. However, that lockout has nothing to do with the Dust Devils or our players. That lockout is only between the Major League Baseball Players Union and the Major League teams. Our players are not a part of the Major League Baseball Union. So even if you do hear the lockout extending into the regular season, you can rest assured that Dust Devils baseball is starting April twelfth in Pasco regardless of a Major League Baseball lockout or not. And then another announcement that we just came to an agreement today, actually, with the WIAA to host the three A and four A state championships back here in Pasco again this year at the end of May. So we posted that event before. It's a fantastic event, weekend of baseball from teams and families and travelers from all over the state coming here to Pasco to, for the state championships. So hopefully, we'll get a couple of local teams in there. We've crowned local champions on our field before. Hopefully, we'll be able to do that again, but either way, fun event with a lot of people coming to town for. Again, thank you, after Darrell's words, thank you. It's a true partnership that we have with the city, and we think it's a mutually beneficial, long-term partnership. So thank you for everything that you all do to make it work.
Director Rakhai, any questions, if there are any? We certainly can take those.
Yeah, I don't know if there's any questions, just from a staff's perspective. We really value the partnership and the improvements we have planned for the facility and the stadium continually to honor the fact that the team remains in the community. It's a great community event, a great economic driver for the City of Pasco and the Tri-City region as a whole. And additional baseball games are good for any sports fans, but it's also good for our hotels, motels, restaurants, gas stations, everyone stopping through for a game. So with that, staff or the Dust Devils organization will take any questions.
All right, thank you, Director Rakhai, and thank you for the presentation as well. It's great to see that we were able to bring this back this year. That was really important, and I'm really excited. And it was, it was great to be able to see the sort of improvements we've made so far and understanding that this is important to make sure that baseball stays here in Pasco. With that, council, any questions or comments? Councilmember Torres.
All right, guys. Ladies first. This is Councilmember Torres. I just want to say that I'm super excited about WIAA, especially the economic impact that it's going to have in Pasco. And also, will you be hosting Los Vineros games here at home again this year?
Yes, we will. We will have roughly six or so, maybe a few more throughout the year and still working through the actual dates of those, but yes, we definitely will. That is a brand that will, will continue. It certainly is not a one-year thing, and will be a part of our, our brand and our team for many, many years to come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just also want to make a comment that I was extremely happy to see the ten-year commitment. I know that was something that really played on my mind in the last couple of years, thinking that the Dust Devils would not play baseball here in the Tri-Cities or in Pasco. Yeah, I was thinking it would be fun to, I don't know if, on a side note, it'd be cool if the council and the city staff could all get together and go to a game sometime. We always see each other on formal setting, but it would be fun to actually take something in on a non-formal setting and enjoy a good game of baseball and some good hot dogs, so. Just, just an idea.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Mill. Councilmember Campos.
Speaking of, you know, economic impact, you know, what would also be really sweet is if Shohei Ohtani came down and signed some baseball.
Yeah, we'll take Mike Trout, too, while we're at it.
A guy can dream.
All right, thank you for that. City Mayor Zabel.
So thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council, Mayor Pro-Ten. I did want to mention that we are updating, and those of the council have been on for a little while, will recall, we did a economic impact analysis for the Dust Devils just a few years back. Of course, that was before this major improvement, in particular in the length of the season. We're going to, in the process of updating that particular study right now, so the council has a little bit clearer impact as to what the additional games mean and the higher level of play for the community from an economic standpoint, heads and beds, those type of things. Certainly, there's some obligations that come with this in terms of improvements that we've talked about before. But I think that economic development impact is something you build a, or improved economic impact analysis, something you build a point to and say that's worth the investment to make these improvements that we need to continue with at Geese Stadium.
Great. And thank you for that, City Manager Zabel. Councilmember Serrano.
Thank you. And I'll just throw on there, one of the kind of unforeseen components that I don't think we can quantify is the value to our community that these all bring. The fact that we have the Americans, the intermittent indoor football league, and then the constant of the Dust Devils, and to the point here, we're talking about these, this team's rising, you know, it's jumped two levels. It's, while Ohtani probably will never be down here, we have a first-round draft pick coming, you know, who knows what will happen with Russell Wilson, maybe he'll come back. Maybe a guy can dream, and he and Kyler Murray will play against one another, and Kyler will actually return to my A's, but, you know. And I just want to say, Brent, I thank you for taking the time to kind of read my mind. My concern was, and I didn't think this would impact it, with the MLB lockout, whether or not we'd have an impact here, and it's great to know that these small-town teams aren't forgotten through that strike. So again, thanks for reading my mind and having that comment.
Great, thank you so much. I will note that I'm going to maybe ask Mr. Zabel to speak to some more, or maybe Director Rakhai. We've got, I know in our budget, we have some more expenditures coming up, can you give me a, please, just give us a refresher on what that, what that's looking like and what investment we're making in, for how much?
Yeah, there's a number of investments that need to be done to the stadium to bring it up to the standard for the Major League Baseball. What we're taking on this year and just about to enter into full construction design is an improvement and expansion of both clubhouses, visitors and home, including the addition of a commissary to each, so just a small eating area. And then a female clubhouse as well. We're starting to see more female umpires, base coaches throughout the leagues coming up, so we're doing that. I believe that those are going to be around eight hundred thousand. I'll have to double-check that number from that as we look at some of our perspectives there. In addition to that, future plans, looking at weight room for the players and just various improvements that are player-oriented. Just last year, we opened up the new batting cages along the first baseline, which have added a lot to the player improvement, and I think making those investments showed the parent club and Major League Baseball that the Tri-Cities and City of Pasco is committed to keep the team here. And so we'll continue to work on that and work through that in subsequent capital budgets and then budget appropriations.
Great, thank you so much for that extra information, Director Rakhai. I know that we're, I think you can tell by the council's tone that we're all very excited about this. We think it's a great community, both amenity for our community, but also an economic driver. We see that impact as well. So look forward to the more detailed study that Mr. Zabel spoke to earlier and look forward to the next steps here. Any other questions or comments from council? All right, with that, we'll go ahead and move on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda, item B, future fire station considerations. Chief Gear is going to tell us that we need to spend even more money on fire.
Not anywhere near as fun as baseball, is it?
If I could make a, a couple introductory comments, so the chief and I are going to kind of tag-team on this a little bit, and of course, we've seen a lot of growth in the fire, well, in the city and corresponding growth in the fire department over the past three, four years in particular. It wasn't that long ago, we had just three fire stations, and we were rated at a community rating five, and hopefully you read about some of that stuff in the, in your agenda report this evening. And that improvement, which the council started a dialogue with staff and the public several years ago, that improvement resulted in an additional fire station, very innovative. Matter of fact, the use of a temporary one on Road Forty-Eight. While the city council also authorized the use of bank capacity at that time to, to construct a fourth permanent station on Core Street, which we saw open up just a few months back. And then also relocation of that kind of a tired, becoming obsolete station there on Road Sixty-Eight, and relocated that station up to Sandifer Boulevard just east of Road Sixty-Eight. And that, that put that station right in the middle of, right in the heart of the demand for that within the service area for that particular facility. So we got to see a lot of, we're seeing a lot of improvement in response times. And matter of fact, we'll be updating the fire master plan, and council can be able to see evidence of that here in the next few months, but so council's taken, I think, a long-term strategic approach at looking at fire facilities. And as we, as we continue to grow, both in the east part of town, particularly in the King City area, and in the area south of SR twelve and one eighty-two, as well as out in the Broadmoor area, we're going to, we're going to have a need for additional facilities. Council's taken, recognized that we've had some recent action approved by the council besides the two stations that I mentioned. One is council had approved the purchase of Station Eighty-seven site out in King City, as well as a site for Station Eighty-five, just off Road One Hundred. And we're going to talk about that station a little bit more in detail in the next item, but so council's seeing the need for that. Also, I know the chief is, you know, he loves his maps and his heat maps, and the two new council members are soon going to learn what a heat map's all about. And, you know, as the population grows, those red spots on the heat map tend to get bigger and and move around a little bit where new population is, and so we don't have Station Eighty-six necessarily locked down just yet. But, you know, I imagine we're looking at probably at someplace in the northeast part of the city in that new annexation area over the next several years. But I wanted to give the council a little bit of a backdrop to that, and I'll let the chief, you know, chief's been front and center and instrumental in the development of the two new stations. Probably very few people know more about putting a new station together than Chief Gear right now, having put two together just in the last few years, and in the process of planning two more currently. So with that, chief, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, good, Mr. Zabel just saved me about five or ten minutes of my introduction, so with that, we'll just move right into talking about maps and just kind of to give you an overview. So the city, what we do to track calls and who goes where is we divide the community, the city, up into what we call emergency service zones, and that's what this first map indicates. And when you read the number on the zone, the such as eighty-one-one, that's Station Eighty-one's first zone that they cover. You've probably noticed, if you looked at these maps in your packet, that we have zones established for Station Eighty-five and Station Eighty-seven. The intent of that was to be able to track the call volume in the areas that those stations would cover, given that we purchased property for both of them, so we have a pretty good idea of what their, what their service zones are going to be. So that's, that's sort of the overview of how we keep track of data. This is a side note, we also then track data down to the quarter section by every call and every quarter square mile and the response times, the number of calls and what units and apparatus went there. So we have some really good data about the service that we provide. So if we could go to the second map, Zach, thank you. The second map's a little bit harder to read. The important points to look at in the second map is, this is a drive-time analysis done through GIS system. And anywhere you see the red dots, those exceed six minutes travel time from our current stations. So we have two areas. The areas on north are not really a concern right now because they are not annexed into the city, the northwest side or the Clark Edition, which probably may never annex into the city. But the areas on the southwest corner along the river, where we see red, that's really was an effect or the ripple effect of moving Station Eighty-three to the north into the area where they were busier. That left some area down by the river that exceeds our six-minute That left some area down by the river that exceeds our six minute travel time. The other area that we exceed our six minute travel time is in the industrial area of the city. And that's been kind of a moving target because quite honestly, the call volume there is not high. The values of risk are very high if we have a fire, but the total calls are not high. But as we'll talk about a little bit later, some, some things have happened over the last six months that are kind of changing our position in that industrial area and to the north of that industrial area. So if there's any questions on any of these by council, just, just jump up and stop me and we'll, so on these first two. Alrighty. So if we go to map three, unfortunately, I'm going to disappoint Mr. Zabel. We didn't do a heat map. We just did a total calls across the community. If it was a heat map, it'd show bright red up there where it says 834 and 835. And it would show bright red down in the 81, 82 and 81 zones in the, in the center of the city. Those are our two concentration of calls that we see. And, and we're pretty well situated to cover the ones in the downtown by having a station on each side of that. Station 81 on Oregon Street or Station 84, the new 84 on Court Street, if 81's committed on another call. As we get up farther north, we only have poor Station 83 sitting up north of the freeway there. And we're, and it's currently our busiest station. So calls in that area are having to be covered pretty routinely from Station 84 down on Court Street or from the airport station. That leads us to why we want to talk about Station 85. Again, in that area, if you see, we have quite a few calls down in that zone, 851 and 852. And in fact, the 851, 852 and 853 last year accounted for over 500 responses in the area that would be covered by Station 85. 500 is kind of a target number in the, in the fire service for when you consider putting a fire station there. When you're having 500 calls within the first due area of that station, you're kind of at that point where you've got to make that consideration of a new station. So having, having to find those zones for Station 5 has allowed us to track that a lot better. If you go to the next map, basically you see Station 5 located on Road 100 at Maple Street. This is the area it would cover. The white area it would cover within a minute and a half. The next lighter gray area, it will cover within three minutes. As you get a little darker, that's in its four and a half minute zones. And then you get out to the dark gray, that's where you're getting to your six, the edge of your six minute travel time goal. One of the things that we've tried to do over the years is we've developed station properties. Quite honestly, is overlap the six minute zones between stations. So that if one station is gone, the other station has a chance of covering that call within a reasonable response time. So we do have, when you lay them all out, you will see overlap in the six minute timeframe. Because remember, we want to cover 90% or nine out of 10 calls in six minutes or less. So we have to have some overlap on that station coverage area or we can't even become close to meeting our 90% coverage goal. So this would be the area that would be covered by Station 5. Not all the area you're seeing, as I say, is in their area. Some of it would be also covered by Station 83 up north and some by 84 down on Court Street. But we would have some overlap of coverage. Personally, I think this is a real good location for the station. It keeps them from being right up in the clogged area that we'll probably see north of 8182 when we see all the development up there. And it also allows them to respond down to Court Street and under the freeway end of that future development that's going to occur west of 182 on the river. The next map shows a proposed drive time for Station 7. You might notice Station 7's time is, or area is pretty compressed right now. And there's two reasons for that. One, they're pretty well landlocked by the railroad yard on the west side. So there's not much we can do there. On the east side, there is no road network in place. So we can't model travel times without a road. We can't drive the fire truck out there in the computer modeling that we use to do that if there isn't a street or a road there to start with. So their, their response area will go farther east when the road network is built out. They do go quite a ways north. And one of the things that's really important is by going farther north, they're actually going to be able to cover into the new Ryman Industrial Center. The proposed Dairy Gold facility is currently six miles from an existing fire station on Oregon Street. That puts them into either a protection class nine or a protection class 10. If you remember, we're a protection class three. People pay their insurance, businesses and homeowners pay their insurance based on that protection class. The lower the number, the least, the less they pay for insurance. They either are going to pay a lot for insurance or they may not even be able to get fire insurance being in a protection class nine or 10 for such a large facility. So to be honest with you, we, in our master plan effort up to this point, we really had thought that the casino would be a driving factor for the construction of Station 7 or a station out in the industrial area. But it actually has been accelerated by the announcement that Dairy Gold is going to build on that Ryman Industrial Complex so far from our stations. But by, by building the AutoZone property on capital that we've acquired, we won't be able to provide that protection class three to that facility that far out. And then if you just look at the last map, it, you will see some of the overlap. This is how we'd look if we filled out Station 5 and 7 in terms of coverage throughout the city. And it, it improves considerably, especially obviously in the southwest side with the addition of Station 5 and in the northeast corner industrial area with the addition of Station 7. As Mr. Zabel had said, we're kind of holding off property purchase in the Station 6 area because I, we just don't really know what the road network is going to look like out there. We have some ideas where the station may need to go, but not enough to go purchase a piece of property at this time and maximize the, the travel distances in that station. So with that, I'm, I'm open for questions and kind of where we're at.
Any comments, City Manager Zabel?
I would just add that, you know, there's a lot to consider. I think the chief's done a great job of putting together a presentation to help the council and the public sort of understand how this all comes together. And, you know, as the, as is the case with the new stations, 83 and 84, you know, the, the folks that are here today will help pay for it as well as the folks that will be coming here. We're adding probably another 35,000 to 40,000 people between now and 2028 that'll be helping pay for this as time goes on. And so whatever, however those are financed, there's going to be a lot of people sharing in the financing of those. Chief did a good job also in the agenda report of providing you some current dollar amounts. Now, you know, you got to put future inflation on those. If we've built a station five years from now, it's probably not going to be the $8 million that Chief Gear is quoting. That's, that's basically what it takes to build one today. And then also the staffing of it, depending on how we staff it. If we staff an ambulance there, it's going to be more than if we staff just a three-person engine crew. So there's a lot of factors and this at least touches on though, some of the higher level of planning that council, I think at this point in time, really needs to be sort of aware of as the growth comes and what it's going to take to serve it. The next, the next piece that we need to work through, I think, is some high level discussions on finance in terms of where's money going to come from? What does that growth look like? How does it carry its burden? Those type of things. Might be, you know, potentially impact fees, those kinds of things to help generate dollars and lessen the burden on existing taxpayers.
All right. Well, great. Thank you, Chief Gear, and thank you, City Manager Zabel, for the introductory comments. All joking aside, we know that as we expand, this is just one of those, one of the necessities. And chief, I really appreciate you laying out the, the situation well as to why and where and how that looks. Council, any questions or comments for staff?
Thank you. Just one question in regards to, there's an introductory comment, subsection five, we're in discussion. It's the second page of our agenda on the PDF. It talks about call volume and 2021 has increased 18% over 2020. Couple of things, how does that track with our actual natural growth? You know, and maybe that's not a question for you as far as our population increase. How does that track kind of year over year? Is that excessive traditionally? And then I think the other questions that either require, I'd say, separate or you can compound the discussion is, do we think there, I mean, what's the level of COVID calls that that's attributable? And then do we think that as people return to work potentially, like, are we seeing a lot of daytime calls of, of people working at home that might be taken care of by employers? You know, fingers crossed, we eventually get back post-pandemic life to working, you know, from work.
So I'll try and take them backwards. So see if I forget one when I get to the other end. In, in terms of time distribution of calls, we have always, and this is my 13th year here. And historically, our peak call time has always been about 10 o'clock in the morning till 10 o'clock at night. Calls drop off dramatically after 10 o'clock at night. Yes, it, you know, you certainly can have that bad house fire or building fire late at night when it, when it goes a while without being detected. But in terms of sheer volume, 10 o'clock in the morning till 10 at night is 75% or more of our calls. Probably higher than 75%, I think, yeah, about 75. So that answers that one. I don't think the work at home thing has really changed that at all. Speaking to an increase, 47 years in the fire service, and I have never seen our call volume in, in any department that I've worked, and this is the fourth one, increase by 18% in one year. We would say, oh my goodness, we went up five or six percent last year to this year from last year. Wow, we're just, our calls are climbing. And, but it wasn't just us. Community wide, call volumes exceeded or went up 15 to 20% throughout the whole community. The impact of COVID on that, our medical call volume did increase by 35%. So yes, the, the COVID transports had an, have and continue to have an impact on, on our, on our call volume, our EMS call volume. I don't know how much our fire call volume or other types of calls went up. But yes, the EMS transports did increase considerably. So it, it is safe to say that there was an impact. The, something that just lost, slipped my mind. So yeah, it, the, the other thing that was interesting, and just to put a plug in, our resource navigator handled 150 cases last year. Those are 150 referrals that came from crews that went onto a house and said, this is going to be a repeat call person if we don't do something. If you remember, before we started that program, there was 60 people in the city of Pasco that accounted for 350 of our 3,500 EMS calls, just 60, the same 60 individuals. If we look at those numbers and say 150 cases, if they reduced our, if she reduced our call volume, if the resource navigator program reduced our call volume even by two or three cases for each one of those, that probably saved us 600, 700 calls. So, so that's had a, that's had an impact in terms of reducing medical calls, even though COVID has, has increased them. So we have some pretty interesting numbers. I'll be honest, there's one issue that's really concerning to me that's going to have a major call impact. And that's going to be our first large assisted living facility that's going in on Burns Road. It's an affinity care center, 450 beds. Those care centers in Kennewick and Richland account for 1.5 to two calls per bed a year. So that's an additional 700 to 900 calls on Station 83 if we don't have 85 built when it opens. And they simply can't handle that call volume. They're already running close to 2,000 calls a year out of that station. So that's, that's going to have a significant call volume impact. I've tried for years to convince the other city staff that we should have a resolution that doesn't allow assisted living facilities, but didn't get anywhere and we're going to get our first one. But, but they are, they're very labor intensive. And we're in discussions on how we, we are going to bill for that type of facility because there's a lot of just simply pick people up and put them back in bed calls that still take two to four people to handle, depending on the size of the patient. Did that answer all your questions, Councilman? I'm sorry.
Yeah, you did. And I really appreciate that. You know, I'll be clear, this isn't me trying to nickel and dime whether or not we should build these facilities. I think when we have numbers out there, you know, 18% jumps off the chart like that, you know, it sounds kind of scary and as you're affirming, it is. So I appreciate that. I, I appreciate everything you and your crews do. I mean, our first responders, fire and police are phenomenal in the city. We should be very proud and we are proud. And I see Mr. Mialan looking at me as our public works people. And I think I can probably keep going down. All of the Pasco staff is phenomenal. Thanks, Dave and crew.
Yep. All we, unfortunately, it looks like we may replace COVID with an assisted living facility. So we may not be out of the woods.
All right. Thanks, Chief Gear. City Manager Zabel, did you have anything else to add to that?
Yeah, I would just add a couple of things to chief's comment on what we allow and what we don't allow. We have a pesky thing called the constitution in our way. But the population growth that we're experiencing is about 3%, you know, two and a half to 3%. So we have a call volume increase of 18%. It's really not a correlation with population growth. Chief said there's probably some COVID, direct COVID impacts to it, you know, in terms of response to, to folks that have COVID-like symptoms or COVID itself. But it's demographics, it's people probably more used to and, and using more freely services like 911 and emergency medical response. And it's probably, you know, I, I would imagine, you know, you, you could probably dig down in here and write a graduate paper on it, I suppose, is there's, there's been a lot of, because of COVID and because of the impact on our hospitals and hospital beds and elective surgeries and, and things like that, there's probably folks that have gotten hauled that might not have been hauled if they'd even ever had the procedure that they could have otherwise had if it hadn't been for COVID. So there's a ton of things going on, but I don't think that explains away a whole 18%. I, I think we can expect that number to kind of stick. Hopefully it won't grow by that. Much going forward, we'd be back down to, you know, four, five, six percent a year, something a little more manageable. But I, I don't, I don't see that number dipping back down in the next year or two. But as I said, we're, we're updating the Fire Master Plan. That's a discussion we plan on having in the Fire Master Plan. But it's pretty crystal ballish. There's no real way to get down to the data to say how much of a bubble that is, if it's a bubble at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council? All right. Chief, I do have a, I do have a question. It's related to the, the kind of the county fire districts. And can you remind me, because I believe we have some very close to where we're talking about, one of these fire stations, there's a, I think there's a county fire station of some sort there. Can you talk to me a little bit about how our interaction with, is with the county fire districts and how those, and how those move and those districts shift as we grow?
The, we have good relationships with both the county fire district here, the fire district in Burbank that, that we sometimes rely on for the east side of the community, as well as the fire districts surrounding Kennewick and Richland. They're, they're very good partners. The fire district, it's called Franklin County Fire District 3, which is a fire district that's kind of surrounds the city of Pasco and goes north to Sage More Road. They have one station that they staff during the day at Clark Edition. And then at night, it has what they call residents, firefighters that live in there in exchange for college tuition at CBC. So they, it, it's a semi-staffed fire station. It's not very staffed. And we have the same circumstance in the Burbank Fire Station over behind the school there, where they staff the stations during the weekday and then rely primarily on volunteers and residents nights and weekends. But they do, they're a very good partner. They, they supply us breathing air on every building fire, supply a unit that brings breathing air to the, to refill the SCBA tanks. They supply water tenders. We, the cities kind of look at the fire districts to supply some of that one-off stuff. You get over in the Benton County side, the fire districts operate the bulldozers and a heavier wildland response capability. And this, and they rely conversely on the cities for more municipal or urban support for large building fires. So does that answer your question? We do work with them well. There is a station on Court Street at 84. That's an all-volunteer station. They, they only have a few volunteers. Volunteer, the volunteer situation across the country is, is critical, getting volunteers over the last few years. And it's no different here than it is anywhere else. People just don't have the time that they used to have to, to spend the time. You know, volunteer firefighter has to meet the same training standards as a career. You know, volunteer firefighter has to meet the same training standards as a career firefighter. So that makes it very difficult for people to really stay in it. What you see is a lot of younger people that are trying to get uh career jobs that start as volunteers and get some of their initial training and experience to be more competitive in the testing process.
Thank you, uh, Chief Gear. I appreciate that. Um, i- in this case, in addition to that, I guess I was wondering, as we annex further and further into the county, um, how does that shift the dynamic? Does it shift at all? It sounds like, given the services that the county provides and how that interaction is, or the fire district, um, Franklin County Fire District does. Perhaps there's not really much of an of an overlap in services here.
Well, I, one of my hopes is that as the fire district grows a little bit and and gets a little better revenue stream. And we annex, um, the Oberlin Annexation as an example, that we actually get a road connection from their Clark Edition Station station into the north side of the city there to help us cover some of that area. Either when we have other calls going and can't get a unit there quick enough, or it's a building fire, and they're one of the units that would come in on that building fire because they're gonna be much closer than some of our stations. So there is some relationship there, as is the potentially with the Burbank area, um, that, you know, it we rely on the ladder truck that they have in that volunteer station for some of our credit for ladder company um coverage on the east side of the community.
Right, appreciate that. City Mayor Zabel?
I I just thought, uh, note, I wanted to note Chief's example of, I think it's Road Fifty-two, that connection you're talking about? Fifty-two, yeah. Yeah, fifty-two. So Road Fifty-two, uh, Mr. Worley, Mr. Mialan here a minute ago. Yeah, fire response is usually about fire response, but the better road system, the more connected you are across the city, the better the response times are gonna be, and the fewer stations ultimately you're gonna need. And as you're finding out from this agenda report and your budget and all kinds of other documents, fire stations are not a cheap proposition, so.
Great, good type, contained the conversation we've had in the past about connectivity and such. Alright, with that, uh, thank you very much. Any other last minute thoughts from from council? Alright, well, thank you, Chief, and uh and Mr. Zabel. Um, we will move on to the next item, which? Chief Gear, I was talking.
Well, I am sure Mr. Zabel's gonna wanna talk about road connectivity and uh Station Eighty-five and Maple Road Extension. So instead of me starting off, I'll ask him if he would like to.
Well, we could, I, well, I I think the the agenda report itself provides, uh, you know, considerable background of the need for the station, that that as well as the the um previous conversation. So this this really does kinda get down to looking at your agenda report, the last few paragraphs there. And wanting to have this conversation with council and planning that site in general. So the chief's taken on the task of of uh planning a new uh fire station. And you can see the site uh on this on this particular uh Can we go to the next one? I think there's. Yeah, the one with the Eighty-five. Oh, there we go, there we go, yeah. So you you can kinda see the Station Eighty-five property, the kind of the brown piece there and and what the surrounding looks like. Uh, you you saw it uh graphically on a much bigger map earlier, but getting down to the site level. That's what it looks like. So we um are looking at uh planning for this site and access to it. And let's go to the next slide now. And you can see the station sort of laid out there, future Station Eighty-five and its orientation to the south, how it fits on the site. Uh, there's a pretty decent remnant of that site left that does provide probably a development opportunity out there. As well as there is uh a property to the south and the south uh, excuse me, the east uh portion of that property. So there there's some developable land back there that we definitely wanna provide that access to. We don't wanna land lock it. But probably more importantly, uh, there's an opportunity to to make a connection. Let's go to the next slide, I guess. Yeah, to make a connection uh that you can kinda see graphically here, would actually be a little bit to the north of of what's shown here. This is just conceptual. That would allow for a connection over to Ninety-sixth uh from Road One Hundred. So we'd have a direct connection between Road One Hundred and uh uh, Road Ninety-six. Uh, council members that have been on a while uh are familiar with seeing a number of emails and phone calls over the over the past several years. Because the, that's so limited there now, uh, those connections. So it creates a pretty intense cut-through traffic uh situation in some, in one of the neighborhoods up there, particularly by a few of the houses. And then up and down that road, there's a lot of uh complaints about speeding, things like that. So where we can and and part of that is just because of the pent-up demand and need and all the extra driving people have to do to get around to go to the store, the gas station, or wherever they get to work, whatever they need to do. So it 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 does kinda create that fresh driver frustration, and so those additional connections uh make things better. We have an opportunity here where there's an existing dead end to the east. There's this thing called a cul-de-sac off and off of Road Ninety-six. And we have an opportunity to connect that to Road One Hundred, and it's a pretty straight shot. It's gonna be one of the best opportunities, best and last opportunities for a straight shot, just because of how developments occurred out there in the county over the years. And uh if we, if we don't take the opportunity, um, you know, we'll find ourselves basically having a continuation of some of the complaints, probably worse as the area gets more and more dense uh that we've heard the last several years from out in that area. Certainly, it doesn't come with a, out of cost. You know, there's a, you can see there's a piece of, uh, two pieces of privately owned property at the end of that cul-de-sac uh that we need to purchase from a couple of very nice-looking homes there. You know, that's probably gonna be a couple of our residents that wouldn't be overly happy about it. Uh, as well as a nice, quiet cul-de-sac. So we we have an opportunity to help an entire neighborhood, but it might come at the cost of uh maybe some inconvenience uh uh from folks that are used to living out of cul-de-sac, living on a through street. So this is a, this is not a decision that staff necessarily makes. We're recommending it. But it's uh kinda one of these um unenviable uh discussions that councils have to have from time to time to determine whether or not, how they, how they want their city to look like in the future. What do what do they wanna plan? And so it, you're you're kinda left with a very difficult choice of knowing that you're going to have a handful of properties that are gonna be impacted. But you're gonna have a lot more of them that are impacted if you, if you don't allow the connection. So it's, there is probably no right answer on this. The only, the only factor, or one of the factors out there is, this is really the only opportunity to to make a connection this direct out there without literally buying houses. So with that, I, I didn't really, I, we we just need some direction.
Yeah, I do wanna add one thing to that. Um, I think it's important for council to know that there is an existing thirty-foot easement on the north property line just to the south of our property and on our south side for that road extension. So this is not um something that we're kinda grabbing out of the air. That that easement is there, um, in our preliminary design work, we actually if if the easement, the whole thirty foot on each side was used, you could probably almost touch the house as you drive by. The house was not located very well in relation to that existing easement. And in fact, I'll be honest, I looked at buying that house a few years ago and didn't because of that easement on the side there. I, and the same with Chief Dunbar. We both separately had looked at that house, thought, oh, no, I don't wanna get. But we've made the decision in our preliminary design to shift Maple Drive away from the house and onto the city's property so that it didn't go right by their house and then eventually come back into the easement. And that's why you see the little jog um coming back onto the easement. So this is not a surprise um for people that purchased that property a few years ago, that that easement existed.
And City Mayor Zabel, any last comments on that?
Uh, I don't, yeah, I I guess my only comment is, you know, for council to discuss it. I don't know that you necessarily have to make a decision tonight, but we do need one fairly soon because we need to, we need to um finalize design and figure out are we building a roadway here? Are we just building a simple little driveway?
Alright, thank you, City Mayor Zabel. And I I think I noted on the previous um agenda item that we're looking at a February um starting of design, I believe, approximately.
We we've been in design for a few months, um, a- and this is where uh kinda the design process is led. What are we gonna do here? Are we gonna just put a driveway into the fire station, or is this gonna actually become a future road? And we're really at a, we gotta go one way or another sort of spot on that, and that's why we came to council to get direction. Because it, uh, as Mr. Zabel said, it has a community impact that that we'll probably have to address if we move ahead um with that road.
Great. So when, so I just wanna make sure I understood that, that, well, we may not need to make a decision tonight. Um, we better be prepared to make one in very quick hurry just to, so we don't slow down uh the design work that's already ongoing for the for the important items that we have for the fire station.
Yeah, we, we, and what we've done with this project is we've broken into two projects. One is the the road widening of One Hundred, the utility movement and the access road. And we wanted to, the intent was to bid that first as one project and then get that far enough along over the next three or four months that we can bid the fire station after that. And people would, uh, contractors would have good access to the station. So we would like to to hit the favor, semi-favorable bidding market i- in the winter when when people are looking to tie up their public works work for the the summer.
Great, thank you, Chief, and thank you, City Mayor Zabel.
Yeah, I, one, I guess one more piece is, we, because of the developable property behind the fire station, both on the city's remaining property, because we don't, we don't need all that property for a fire station and the property of the south, you'll probably see extra lots go in there. So there will be some sort of access road uh goes into there. There, you know, obviously, the real question is whether or not uh that is a, that is a road designed to to uh connect to the end of that cul-de-sac ultimately or not. And again, I will share that it's explaining to a cul-de-sac why it's a good idea is not an easy thing. Explaining to someone why we have two cul-de-sacks backing up to each other, and the fire department has to go all the way around the block to get to your house when you're two hundred feet away, that's probably a tougher conversation to have. But that's in the future.
Alright, well, thank you very much. Um, council, we're looking for questions and comments. Mr. Campos?
Just real quick, this is not gonna be an easy decision or one I think we're gonna take lightly, but I will make light of a situation. Chief Gear, how come you didn't look at the Brightview property as an option here? I feel like that would serve both of our interests.
So which properties, I'm sorry?
The assisted living facility property.
Oh, how can we look at that as a?
That would be my preference.
I I'm having a hard time even, it's up on Burns Road anyway. It's quite a ways north and I have a hard time seeing any light in the end of that tunnel.
Uh, but going back to that, so I guess, you know, Jacob Gonzalez is working on the transportation master plan. And some of my thoughts are if some of the stuff is addressed or uh discussed in that transportation master plan about connectivity. And again, connectivity being a big part of how you can service the residents of Pasco. Again, reiterate, this is not gonna be something I think we we take lightly, so.
Thank you for that. Councilman Mill?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'm Mayor Fortem. Yes, uh, this being my district, I could see that uh there's gonna be some people that are gonna be mad and some people that are gonna be happy. Um, I was asking, my question is, what kind of uh uh basically, what kind of interaction have we had with eleven homes that would be affected by this? Are they aware that we're talking about putting a road in? Or has there been any kind of letter or phone calls?
We've had some preliminary discussions, but not anything saying it's gonna happen. It just that, you know, this easement's here and the city is looking at what are the options to serve those uh undeveloped properties, both our piece and the two pieces to the south. And that this may come up. Um, similar discussions to both uh people on the uh west side of of One Hundred where the Maple intersection needs a little more alignment and may get busier. We haven't been in a spot to tell anyone this is our intent because we don't know the exact intent, but we have told them that this, what's being examined. And that one of the points we've tried to make, if this lot sold to a private developer, we would ask them to do the same thing. That they would be required to, if that whole four point seven acres that we bought for Station Eighty-five's property had gone to a private developer to put houses on, we would have asked for the same connectivity um from engineering and and planning when that permit came in.
Okay, and then the follow-up question be, the two homes that are on the cul-de-sac of Maple, how long, so if they don't wanna sell, how long does that process take before you could basically, you know, get public do, or public you know, domain, that sort of stuff?
I mean, it it depends on, you know, what what actions the council take. If if you were to do a condemnation and you know, not recommending that tonight, but if you were to do a condemnation, you could probably have possession and use within ninety days or so. The actual end of the process could take up to a year. It just depends on what it takes for everybody to agree to what a fair price is and those type of things, so.
Okay, and then the third question is, the development to the south where you got uh Merlot, that if you look at the road on your map here, it looks like the road is, you know, it comes to an end, but then there, of course, you got the field. Is there a plan for that one also to be connected to Road Ninety-six? Merlot isn't, if you look at uh, it goes into like a field, but it looks like if you connect it, it would go right into Ninety-six and connect on all the way straight through.
Yes, Mr. Mill, uh, that that will happen, of course, during the project phase of development.
Okay, so that one definitely is gonna connect as well?
One of the other things I might point out is, it's not the intent uh in the fire station construction to run that road all the way through. So it could be years until that back half develops and the need to to finish the road off uh goes. It it, the point that we're at is we really, do we start uh on the station property with a driveway? Or do we start with a regular road with the intention that five years from now or whatever, as a back, as the city sells that back piece and those other individuals are interested in developing their property, then the extension goes on through. So it doesn't happen right away.
Okay, do we know how long it takes for the the one on uh Merlot as far as how the development and everything?
No, we haven't seen anything recent on that.
Okay, so that could take five, ten years? Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you for that, council. Um, in in the other discussion, comments, I I do, just just wanted to note that that Steph is looking for some amount of direction, uh, maybe not full direction tonight, but at least I think um leaning towards where we're going so they can develop the options more fully. So uh, we welcome um full participation tonight.
Yeah, just wanna make sure I understand what we're saying is that um you're asking for, uh, mask broke, um, you're asking for our input on whether or not to potentially condemn this property um, so that we can construct on an existing right-of-way recognizing that the exist, or an existing easement, that the existing easement composi- component closest to Road One Hundred will probably build on and leave the remainder for at least five years? I just wanna make sure that I'm fully comprehending how how we're gonna potentially build this piece by piece.
Let's see if I can find the cursor on here. Nope. Oh, there it is. Really, the decision that's short-term is, does this become a small driveway that comes into the back of the fire station to get around back? And that's the direction we proceed with planning? Or do we decide that eventually this road, that road network should go through? And we should construct the 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 first portions of this development with that in mind. And then as this goes on over the next few years, and probably most likely what would happen is we would split off the back three acres or so that we're not using and sell that to a developer for housing. And that could occur at the same time that the two lots to the south um may decide they wanna develop into housing. And at that point, the road requirement would go right on through.
I I think it's safe to say, we may not even be the party that asks for the vacation of the right-of-way on the end of the cul-de-sac. Uh, because we're not developing that far to the to the uh east. It's really how do we design the the first portion of this so that it either can become a road in the future as it, as the um area develops? Or it just essentially stays at a lane and a half driveway for access to the back of the fire station a- and effectively cuts off any future opportunity for connectivity.
Okay, I appreciate that. So with that background, my thoughts are this, uh, I think we ought to announce our intent that at some point, from my perspective, we wanna at least leave open the punch-through option. And then, yeah, this is my perspective. I'm not speaking for council here. We wanna at least leave that open. And I think we need to explore those conversations with at a minimum those three property owners, the ones uh in the cul-de-sac, the two back there, and then the one that's uh right on the roadway. I think council would be Um, I think council would be remiss, or the city would be remiss, if we left a future developer entirely on the hook to have that conversation. Uh, so I think we need to, again, address that issue as something that we're con- contemplating now. Um, I think it'd be wise to have full access. I don't like the idea necessarily of some type of condemnation process. Quite frankly, if we're gonna do that, let's get an inventory of all the city property we'd like to condemn, and start taking action at once. Um, but I do think that we need to have those conversations, and I do not think that we should leave a future developer entirely on the hook to have those conversations to, or to address the issue. I think that's something that if we're contemplating punching through to the cul-de-sac, we need to bear the responsibility for that, and potentially embark in it through the transactional process as we sell it. That's my take.
Thank you, Councilmember Serrano. Councilmember Torres.
Uh, I do agree with Pete's sent, with Councilmember Serrano's sentiment. Um, but I do have a question on that parcel south, uh, that connects the, that looks like Farm Line right next to Merlot Drive. Do we know what the intentions are with that parcel? Nope, okay. I was just curious if the developer, or whoever own, currently owns it, is planning to develop, or what they are planning to do with that lot? No, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you for that.
Mayor Protem.
Yes, thank you, Miss, uh, Councilmember Campos.
Councilmember Campos, just a quick question. It, it sounds like, from the discussion we've had about this property, again, not speaking for council, but we probably all agree that fire and emergency response is pretty important. Uh, and I kinda defer to Councilman Mill me about this, but it sounds like, and, and forgive me if I'm out of place here, but maybe having a public hearing on this matter is a, is a good call, and maybe that's our recommendation to staff to notify, uh, the residents of our intent to put a building there, and then get public comment back, and then we can further refine what our future intent is. And so, again, that's just discussion point. I'll, I'll let Councilman Mill me kinda back me up on that. If you think it's important for your constituents to come here and say what they need to say.
Yeah, I'd agree a hundred percent on that.
Mr. Zabel, just to follow up on that, um, what, how, how does that affect our timeline for when a decision needs to be reached for the design phase of our fire station?
Well, I guess a couple of comments on that. I, I don't know that I'd stir the hornet's nest by a public hearing just yet, until you had a little bit better sense. Because I, I think, you gotta, you got three, three levels, I guess, you could pursue here, which I, I'm sensing that, uh, a simple driveway is not one of them, that, that the council's interested in. So, that gets it down to two choices. I mean, there's, uh, uh, the full, the full meal deal where you're gonna have that conversation now, and, yeah, even to the extent of maybe approaching a couple of the property owners out there about, uh, purchases of the future right-of-way, uh, to allow that connection to occur. Uh, the second would be, and it, and it wouldn't be, uh, wouldn't be the end of the world, is, uh, you go forward, and maybe you're not making that decision just yet, other than you know you have to have a public street to get back to those properties, your, the cities, uh, yeah, as well as, uh, the property to the south. And, uh, the worst-case scenario is gonna be you're gonna have two cul-de-sacs backing up to each other. Not an ideal situation, but, you know, maybe that's not a decision you need to make right now. You know, after listening to this conversation, you know, I, I think the decision you need to make right now is, what do we build past the fire station, a driveway or a road?
All right, thanks for additional comments on that, Mr. Zabel. Um, Mayor Barajas, do you have any comments on this?
This is Mayor Barajas. Um, looking at the picture here, I don't know exactly how we should proceed, but I do want to give people the opportunity to weigh in. Um, City Manager just said, maybe now's not the time to, um, see which way we're gonna go on this. But I, I do believe our constituents need to speak up, and have the opportunity to weigh in on what goes up in their vicinity. But I also agree that we need to, um, have responders close by to these areas, especially these cul-de-sacs where we may not get in there, um, in a timely manner. Um, so just, wow, this is a difficult one, and then just looking forward to see how this develops.
All right, thank you, Mayor Barajas. Um, I do have a question, um, so I understand that there's a portion of this right-of-way and easement that exists, um, that we have, you know, we'll say rights to, so to speak, to develop. Um, there is a gap, if I understand correctly, between the, the current cul-de-sac and the rest of the right-of-way. Is that correct? Or is it simply just that it's not wide enough for the easement we're looking for?
No, I'm sorry, go ahead. Yeah, it's the, the right-of-way of the cul-de-sac ends in that, right at the circle.
In the existing cul-de-sac on the east side.
Yeah, and so there, there'd be a gap that, that would have to be, uh, acquired to make that connection to the property line of the property of the south, so you can make a full road connection through there.
But that is currently an easement, and which we have right of access across that?
The, the easement runs, um, on the south side of our property up to the cul-de-sac. But for some reason, they didn't take the last fifty feet on the other side of the property line and, and have an easement there. Um, I'll come up.
Yep, no, I, I see the hashed area there, where there's that little, little stubble at the end of the, the circle.
There's an easement, a part of the easement is placed right here. It doesn't really line up, but it comes up to this property line, and then there's this easement here. And nothing was ever finished when this was built in the county. There was never any dedication of this little bit of easement right here to connect those roads.
Great, okay, all right. Absolutely, thank you, Chief. Um, all right, well, thank you, so I'll, I'll just wrap up my comment with saying, um, um, I do think we need some sort of road access here. Obviously, there's gonna be a property that's gonna end up being landlocked if we don't have some sort of better access. Whether that ends in a cul-de-sac, or whether that punches on through, I think that's, that's reasonable to, to have a future conversation with, with the affected residents. Um, and it sounds like we can make a decision now that would affect the, uh, allow the design to continue, and then further, um, into the future have both individual and, um, potentially larger public, uh, conversations with affected landowners, and make sure that they understand what's going on, and have an opportunity to have their voices heard. I see lights on, uh, Councilmember?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor, or Mayor Protem. Um, yes, I would agree with you a hundred percent that I believe it should also be a road. It seems like if we were trying to get the most amount of, um, houses in the amount of land that we have left and make it more dense, it seems like having a driveway doesn't make sense to me. I mean, you can't have a fire truck and then a car trying to go down the same road. So, uh, a road definitely, and, uh, yeah, um, tough decision, but, uh, I definitely think our road should be what we should be pushing for at this moment.
Thank you, Councilmember Mill, um, Councilmember Campos.
Councilman Campos, I have two thinking about a road. Um, Councilman Serrano made some good comments about not making a developer fully responsible for developments in the future, and I think that kinda shows a, a good stead, if you will. But also, uh, again, Councilman Mill me saying that we need to account for property. We don't wanna landlock everybody. If engineering would recommend that we would do this anyways, again, if all things were perfect, I mean, why not just go do it the right way the first time, even if it's not the easy decision?
All right, thank you, council. Um, I, I hope this has been a, a thorough discussion for our staff. And I hope the, the public understands as well that we take these very seriously when we're talking about the impact to existing, uh, property owners and houses. This is important to us to get right. So I think this might be the way to thread the needle here, and so I appreciate staff's recommendations, and I think we're, I, I hope we've given you enough direction to move forward.
Well, I think we can blame the chief and deputy chief for not buying the property and for ranting it back to the city in the past five years. Thanks for not solving this problem, gentlemen.
And, and really, yes, it did give us direction. What you're saying is, instead of building a driveway on our property, build the road on our property, and as we move along with this, we'll figure it out after there, but let's not landlock, um, those essentially three parcels to the, to the east of that fire station by the action that we take today.
That's some.
Does that summarize it?
Summarizes it perfectly. And, and, and don't think I'm not also thinking about water, water lines along there. I seem to recall water and sewer being a point of contention just barely to the northeast of this, uh, fire station property. So what I'm thinking about that as well, that's, that's, that's top of mind as well, so I hope you.
And that's part of really discussion, if we were gonna build a small road or a driveway, would we run sewer and water there, would we run it? But if we're gonna build a road, we'll run sewer and water there, so that it's stubbed, um, to the portion of the road that's on our property, and then can be extended, um, if, and when that, that need occurs.
Great, thank you for that. All right, well, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and move on to the next, uh, agenda item. And we're on to item D, SG Land Management LLC Harris Road Annexation. Director White.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem and council. And, uh, of course, it's a workshop, there's no action expected at council tonight, but this is, um, uh, just an informational, uh, issue. Uh, there's an annexation that involves about thirty-nine acres. It's located south of Harris Road and, and just west of the one eighty-two bridge. Uh, again, the annexation itself is relatively straightforward. It will return to council for a decision in February, and, uh, also a zoning determination. But there's a little wrinkle to this one. Um, they are also processing a planned unit development. So it will come back to council, because by our, by provisions of our Pasco Municipal Code, uh, planned unit developments, or PUDs, signify and represent a zone change. So you will be doing a zoning determination on February seventh. You'll also, uh, subsequent to that, be, uh, making a determination on the planned unit development once a recommendation from the hearing examiner is received on the, uh, on the application. Uh, so that's it, uh, relatively brief history. You'll see this again. You actually saw it, uh, about nine months ago or so when you accepted the annexation, but things are moving along, and, uh, we'll get this in front of the examiner in, uh, February, I believe.
Great, great, thank you, Director White. Any questions or comments from council? Councilmember Serrano?
I do have one comment, and I guess it's a question. I'm looking at one of the original applications, and if I read the writing correctly, it's one eight twenty twenty. So we've been working with this for almost two years, is that correct?
Uh, well, the annexation was accepted in May of twenty twenty, so it's, it's, uh, yeah, it's pushing about a year and a half.
Is there any particular reason, I mean, has the applicant withdrawn and, like, rescinded and then pushed back? Or is there a reason we're sitting on like sixteen months if, if we don't take that January date?
No, it's, no, there's, there's no, there was no, uh, contention or contrariness. It just took a while for this application to gel.
Sorry, I missed that.
Just took a while for this application to gel, I think.
Okay, okay, I just, I just wanna make sure that, to the extent that it's controlled by our staff, that we can make sure that we're, you know, and advancing things as quickly as possible, and I appreciate that.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Serrano. Uh, any other questions or comments from council? All right, yeah, I do, I just, I guess my, my comment would be, I think this will be the first, um, uh, PUD that we end up, um, processing as this council. I, I certainly don't remember dealing with a planned unit development. I do however remember an extensive effort to, uh, revise our, uh, code to improve our PUD regulations. So, um, look forward to seeing how this process works and, um, hope to see it quickly. I, I seem to recall it gives the developer a lot of flexibility in doing some pretty cool stuff. So I'm looking forward to see what the, uh, what, what sort of exciting, uh, uh, plan that the developer has for this. All right, well, thank you, Director White. We'll move on to the next item here. So item E, resolution for an interlocal agreement for Columbia River Bacteria Management Plan. Director Worley.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, council members. This item is to answer any questions related to an interlocal agreement that the four cities in the tri-cities area is working on. Uh, many of you may be aware that, uh, last summer, we had an issue with some harmful algal blooms in the Columbia River, and that is something that could be of concern. And so we are wanting to enter into an agreement with a consulting firm that the City of Richland has hired to look at a, um, uh, response plan and, uh, management plan. And the idea would be for the four cities to share in the cost of that plan, because we all benefit from having that same response plan. Uh, you'll see in the agenda report that the cost of the proposed agreement with, uh, the consulting firm is split, uh, evenly between three of us, and, uh, West Pasco gets half of what the rest of us pay for, with the idea being that they don't have a water treatment plant off of the river. Uh, they buy their water from, uh, City of Richland, or get that from groundwater. So, we are here, I'm here to answer any questions you may have about possibly entering into this qua, interlocal agreement for the purpose of this management plan.
All right, great, thank you, Director Worley. Uh, any questions for, or comments from council? I'm not hearing any, I'll just ask one quick one, um, Director Worley. I'll, I'll be honest, um, when I heard, uh, Richland's, uh, um, issues there along their park, first thing I thought of was our, um, our boat basin as, um, being that sort of, it seems like that would be the sort of territory that that would thrive in. So look forward to seeing a consultant's results as to whether, whether that's gonna be a potential issue, and then how would we solve that if it is an issue? I know that's, that, that area can be, um, could use some love regardless, um, as we heard earlier in our emergency declaration. So, Director Worley, thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll move on to the next item. Um, so item F, resolution for a bid award for West Pasco Water Treatment Plant Improvements Phase One. Director Worley.
Yes, welcome, uh, good evening again. This item is to answer any questions related to a potential bid award for the West Pasco Water Treatment Plant Improvements Phase One. As council may recall from previous, uh, presentations, there are two phases to the West Pasco Water Treatment Plant that will increase the capacity of that plant from six million gallons per day to twelve million gallons per day. And this is needed in order to keep up with the growth that's happening in Pasco. And so, um, we are, had the project designed by our consultant, and we put it out to bid. Uh, we received four bids on it, and the lowest responsible bidder was Apollo. Uh, the bid came in just slightly over the engineer's estimate, which was really good. Uh, we did notice that through the course of the design, the cost estimates kept going up and up. But we believe that's a reflection of the market today. Cost prices for materials were going up, um, supply chain issues were causing impacts to suppliers. And so unfortunately, that is reflected here. We do have, uh, the budget to be able to do this project. We're going to monitor our water budget that was approved by council, and ensure that we stay within what was adopted. So this may impact other projects that we had on the list for this year. Uh, depending on how well we do all of the other projects, uh, we may or may not have to hold off on some of the ones that we had planned for in order to stay within what we budgeted this year. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, Director Worley, thank you. And I will just note that, uh, in an email conversation you and I had earlier, uh, this is approximately one point one million dollars above the construction estimate that we just approved in the budget for this year. Um, and I understand it's part of a larger pool of projects.
Correct.
Great, uh, any questions or, uh, yeah, Councilmember Campos.
Uh, Mr. Worley, good to see you. Uh, just a quick question, you mentioned that, that maybe we'd be bumping a line item or two because of, uh, unexpected funding, uh, not being super familiar with projects that we planned. Is coming in the new council member, what do you think is gonna get bumped?
Uh, there are several projects that we have listed in our budget this year that are small improvement projects throughout the city. Some of them are more important than others. And so we'll probably take a look at those that are, that could possibly be delayed to future years. And that would be the way that we would typically handle that situation.
Thanks.
All right, great, any other questions or comments from, uh, council?
Oh, and I did mean to mention that part of this project is being covered by a low-interest loan from the Department of Health. Uh, staff has done a fantastic job of continuing to go after funding to help reduce the cost for all of our ratepayers.
All right, great. I think a great, great reminder of how much work goes into making sure that we have the money, not just the budget, but actually the funding available for that, and that we're not running entirely on the back of our, uh, ratepayers.
Correct.
So appreciate that very much and that reminder.
And this, this particular phase is a five million dollar low-interest loan. We did put in an application for Phase Two as well, and luckily, it increased the top maximum amount moved up to eight million dollars. So that should be helpful for us.
All right, great, um, all right, well, thank you, Director Worley. All right, with that, we'll move on to item G, council voting districts, redistricting discussion. All right, with that, we'll move on to item G, Council Voting Districts, Redistricting Discussion. I'll note that the city attorney is not here today. The city manager is able.
We do have Assistant City Attorney Briggs online. I'll give a couple introductory comments that I that I know I believe he's going to jump on, but as this council is acutely aware, being the first council that was elected under this system, the city divided up into six districts in an at-large seat, and that was as a result of a decision by Judge Lonnie Suco, the Federal District Court, back in May of twenty seventeen. And interestingly enough, those districts are formulated based on the census data. So prior to that, the city had had, I think, in good in well-meaning, I guess, to to update the districts on a fairly frequent basis based on OFM numbers that we'd received from the state of Washington. One of the things we learned through the through the legal process and in working with our experts that we, the same team we have on for this latest update, was that the dicennial census is the gold standard. What that means to this council is your districts are drawn around two thousand and ten numbers. So we will see some changes in the district boundaries going into this next round. We we did complete the ten-year census in for twenty twenty back in August of, well, April of twenty twenty-one, and I think the results were made available to us towards the end of August of twenty-one. At the same time, council, excuse me, the legislature passed the State Voter Rights Act. And the State Voter Rights Act has its own set of deadlines and so forth associated with it. There were some deadlines for this year, excuse me, late twenty, December twenty twenty-one for municipalities that were going to be having general elections that occur within twenty twenty-two. Our next general election doesn't occur until twenty twenty, till the odd, we have we have our elections on the odd year, so we didn't have to meet that December deadline, but we do have a deadline this year that we have to meet. Reason being is so that folks barely know where the district boundaries are, and they can make decisions early on about who's running, who's not running, how they campaign, the strategies, those type of things. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Briggs. He's going to give us a little bit more detail on what that what that deadline is and the the firm we're working with. We have the same, I'll note that we have the same demographer and and social scientists that we dealt with during our last go-around.
All right, great. Thank you, City Manager Zabel. Mr. Briggs.
And good evening, Council, and thank you for that introduction. City Manager Zabel did a great job explaining the the situation here. As City Manager Zabel pointed out, our last city boundaries, our districts were determined by a federal district court, Judge Suco, who approved that last revision through the ACLU lawsuit. We are working with the same law firm, Fluger, and we provided them with the census data as well as our shape files, and they are working with our demographer. So we are on track right now for the redistricting process. And that deadline again is is November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, as Manager Zabel pointed out. And we should be in good shape. The the prior lawsuit, although that did establish our current districts, it does not affect this redistricting effort. I did review the consent decree in that matter and also forwarded that to the law firm that's working on the redistricting effort. Does Council have any questions for me?
All right, great. Thank you for that brief introduction there, Council. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Serrano.
Yeah, thank you. In the event that these, I guess regardless, if we're redrawing our districts to anticipate needing to rerun at some point primary prior to the completion of our offices, our office tenures?
This is a little bit different.
Go ahead, go ahead, excuse me.
Yeah.
No, no, that shouldn't that shouldn't be an issue. We shouldn't need to have Council, you know, run again in another election. This shouldn't affect the elected officials during, you know, their their current terms. So this will just be up during the next election cycle.
Yeah, I I I guess for from a layperson's standpoint, the reason that occurred last time was because technically we had an invalid system that didn't meet the Federal Voter Rights Act. That's what the judge found. And because of that, we we ran elections for all seven of those positions. So we were we're operating under a very valid system. Right now, we're just going to make adjustments to our boundaries to reflect the increase in population and the growth patterns that were that population developed over the ten years since the two thousand and ten census.
Okay, I appreciate that context. I was just kind of confused when I saw this pop on. I was like, oh, you know, the county and the school district are looking at the same issue. They're looking at totally modified seats, and and I recognize the distinction here is that, you know, we preceded what they're going through by five years. But I guess the true impact was kind of my question, and you've answered it. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions or comments from Council? Yeah, my only question was a little bit of fallback. That that does answer, I think, very clearly my my number one question. But and obviously, we have to comply with the Washington State Voting Rights Act, but I guess I'd be very sensitive, and I hope I hope that our our consultant will be very sensitive to the fact that we we certainly have a population that's paying very close attention right now, and I would hate to end up in a situation where there's any any doubt whether Pasco as a city is continuing to comply with what we agreed to comply with before. So even if we're not necessarily under the jurisdiction of our of the courts still at this point, I would certainly encourage staff to 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 make sure we're we're clearly on the on the bright line here.
Yeah, that's understood, and and as we as we did went through last time, I'm will have a very robust opportunity discussion on it and opportunities for the public to weigh in and and take a look at what their proposals are and the rationale for them. I think one thing we learned last time was we went through it, it was just how valuable that transparency was for the community. In the end, we had a we had a couple competing plans. You know, there was a plan by the ACLU for seven districts, and the city's plan, six and at-large. But I think the reason it was so very well-accepted in the end was because of the transparency that was employed at the time. We would want to mirror that, if not even improve on it if possible, so.
Great. Appreciate those sentiments.
And I would just add add to that, that the the city does enjoy discretion under the law. So as long as their, you know, decision meets a sort of rational basis test under the law, then it should be adopted.
Great, appreciate that. All right, there's no other comments or questions? That's what's the deadline? When would we expect this to be coming back in front of us, I guess, City Manager Zabel?
I don't know that I can answer. I I would say we're probably looking at that in June-July timeframe in terms of being able to have the the work by the demographer completed to the extent we come in and have a and have a specific conversation and and some alternatives for Council to look at. I mean, it really, you know, recalling this from last time, it it comes down to a math problem. It's being able to get the highest percentage of voter, those type of Hispanic voters in concentrated in as many districts as we can. So it's, we don't, you know, to to use the the terminology used back in twenty seventeen and twenty sixteen when we were talking about this, we don't want to, we don't want to crack, or we don't want to pack. If you pack, then you don't get enough districts. If you crack them apart, then you don't get any districts. So it's it's really about finding those right census tracts and moving those boundaries around to maximize the impact so that everyone in the community has has an equal vote.
Great, all right. I appreciate that. City Manager Zabel? All right, with that, we'll move on to the next item here. So we've got item H, Local Finance Options for an Income Tax. City Manager Zabel.
So we we've had a little.
If I may just real quick, just to be very clear, we are not discussing implementing an income tax. At no point is this part of the discussion today. Thank you. City Manager Zabel.
Well, that that actually is a very good distinction because I think this discussion is about just how you convey that. It's not about Council considering an income tax. It's how do how does the Council best convey to the public that you have an in income tax? I think the the gamut sort of runs from by not imposing one would be one way to convey it. You don't have one, so that means you're all against it. You could take a motion and just simply make a statement. A couple of the options we we suggested in the agenda packet would be a resolution, which stated the councils, which states the council's opposition to a local income tax and passage of an ordinance. Passage of an ordinance, as we're as we're suggesting, at least as an option, was would be to draft a resolution directing staff to prepare an ordinance. So that would be one alternative. And then another alternative in the packet, based on some of the discussion we had our last meeting, was maybe Council takes a broader view of local financing and looking in home rule fiscal policy because that discussion's happening at the state level right now, and just be a little probably more, I guess, suggesting maybe more proactive in in what the Tax Reform Commission is looking at. And so I do, we do have Brianna Murray, our Vice President from Gordon Thomas Honeywell, on the line. She's available for to to discuss this last piece. Wanted to throw those options out there to Council and just get some direction. It's been a little bit of an awkward discussion because there really, there's been kind of a shifting discussion among Council and and this started off, I think it's fair to say it started off as a a proposal from Councilmember Serrano, and part of that kind of morphed last week and then morphed a little more towards the end of the meeting. We were talking specifically at a bill, I think it was Senate Bill five 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 four, which actually had a hearing last week, a couple days after the council meeting. We were all unaware of that at the moment. And so we, you know, that that was going to come back, and what what came back with Ms. Murray's suggestion was the Tax Structure Work Group concept that we, as as a city, engage perhaps a little more proactively with that group and and try to influence policy. So with that, I'm going to ask Ms. Murray if she had any additional comments to make, and then Council, please feel free to direct us how you proceed to go.
Thank you, Mr. Zabel. Good evening, Council. This is Brianna Murray, your contract lobbyist. Oh, I don't have my camera on. I'll turn it on so you can see my lovely, very tired face from advocating for you for endless hours. So the the letter that is in your packet is my recommendation on how best to engage in a discussion around appropriate tax structure with the state legislature. The bill that was heard last week is not likely to advance. I did speak with the Chair of the Committee that heard the bill. They indicated that they were holding the public hearing to simply have the discussion. And so, you know, anything can happen between now and February third, which is the next committee cutoff deadline, but my all indications point to that bill not advancing. I'm also not expecting significant tax policy changes to be made during the twenty twenty-two legislative session. And instead, what's more likely to occur is the Tax Structure Work Group will make recommendations to the twenty twenty-three legislature. So the letter in your packet is providing feedback to that Tax Structure Work Group as they develop their recommendations. And I think just as easily, Council could choose to not provide input at this time into the legislative arena, and that would be equally as appropriate as sending the letter. I think that is your choice. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brianna. And City Mayor Zabel, do you have any other comments to follow up on that?
No, I do not. I just, I I would just ask Council to discuss where we're at and just let us know which option you want to pursue or which options.
Great, appreciate that, Mr. Zabel. And I will start by saying that I did have an opportunity to talk with Brianna about this, and I think she gave a good overview of some of that conversation in that I had proposed a legislative portion of our our city council role in trying to help advocate for for ensuring that this is not something that's that that we we say we protect our taxpayers by, you know, at this time, not looking at any sort of personal income tax. And I appreciate very much the concept. I I was not aware of the work group, so I appreciate that there is a an avenue for that is collecting feedback. And so so just, I guess, from my conversation, I see that as appropriate. I don't think we need to necessarily need to add to our legislative agenda or go testify on behalf of this if it's not looking like it's going to advance at this time and make sure we're focusing on the other items in our legislative agenda that are like that are hopefully going to go forward and and really benefit the City of Pasco. So with that additional conversation, I guess I'd say that 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 seems to be the most appropriate way to for for me to see how we can move forward. I may have some comments in the letter, but I wanted to make sure that we didn't spend any time if the rest of Council isn't supportive of providing input to that work group. So with that, it's a discussion. I, a number of options that that staff has laid out in front of us, kind of based on conversation we as a bodies have heard. I would very much like to stop talking about this conversation and make a decision and move forward with it because as as we've all discussed, this isn't something we're going to implement. This is something that we're looking at protecting our that, you know, how do we have a conversation about this? So rather, stop talking about things that we aren't going to do and start talking about things that we need to do. So whatever we decide, I'd like just to move forward and make a make a decision and and move on to other things. So that's that's my preference there. So with that, any any new or interesting information or brief comments? I understand it's a little after nine o'clock, and I believe we have need for an executive session tonight, so. Councilmember Serrano.
Yeah, I stand by the position that we should modify our code. We'll direct staff to provide a resolution to modify the code to state our position that we will not impose an income tax on personal or business properties. The fact that this is dead this year means that this is going to come like again next year or the next year. I I guess I don't understand the opposition to modifying our code. We do it every week almost. So I I if we're you, if we have a position that we're opposed to this, let's just codify it, and if a future council decides to override it, they can so do by removing that section of the code that prohibits the bill. I mean, either we're opposed to it or not, but talking about and stating our opposition is different than actually showing it to the residents. So I'm in the position that we should still move forward. We should adopt a resolution directing staff to put modify the PMC accordingly. My position's not changed.
Thank you, Councilmember Serrano. Any other discussion? Councilmember.
As you told before, I also agree with Mr. Serrano. I just just put it in writing, and again, if they change it, they change it, but I know this council doesn't want to impose an income tax, but let's just put it in writing. Just get it done with and show that we do care about our citizens. So that's my point.
All right, other other feedback? All right, well, the other council members are, oh.
Briefly, again, this is Jeff Briggs for the record. If we are intending to modify the code, I would suggest doing it by ordinance rather than by resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Briggs. Mayor Barajas, do I hear you? Can you speak up?
Yes, I'm going to speak as long as I still have a voice. I'm losing my voice here. I agree with the Councilmember, sorry, Mayor Portamaloney. Brianna, thank you so much for the presentation. Thank you for looking further into this. And Councilmember Serrano, I also want to thank you for preparing the resolution. I'm in agreeance that we have a big agenda in our legislative districts that we need to push forward. I'm in agreeance with our recommendations from Ms. Murray. If there needs to be a letter written and sent forward, support what is already going on to support the workforce that is diligently working on this. I feel we need to keep our eyes and keep being supportive of this. I also feel that by having this discussion, we are showing our citizens, our constituents, that we are not just looking into imposing a new tax on them. We are hearing them. But it's something that But it's something that can be further advanced via our legislators. So my stance is that we push forward with getting past this issue. And we'll look into it when it's brought back into our path. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor Barajas. I guess, you know, my statement is, in answer of why would I be opposed to this? Simply because there's a thousand things I get asked on an email to say, does the city oppose things? And the simple fact is that I don't, I don't believe that codifying things that we, we oppose. Or even frankly, passing resolutions that don't necessarily affect any action of the city. I don't want to start opening that gate to just allowing anyone who comes in and says, I want you to oppose this. If there's a meaningful action that aligns with our council goals and protecting our taxpayers, like for example, influencing the working group and protecting not only the taxpayers in Pasco, but potentially the taxpayers across the state, that to me is a meaningful action that I support. So so I, I can speak of a number of times where I've opposed resolutions that were having no action, including by former councilmembers of this body. And I'm, you know, very consistent with my, my approach that those should not be used for, for either negative actions or actions that the city has no, no place in. So in this, we have a letter in front of us that would allow us to actually take meaningful action to, you know, to prevent income taxes. I'm supportive of that and I think that's the direction we should go. Councilmember Campos.
Councilmember Campos, I very much want to stop talking about this. This is something, again, we have other business to attend to. My, my question for everybody, and again, this is probably just my naivety, is, you know, again, if we put this out, even if it's in part of the PMC, to me, it seems like my understanding of how hierarchy works, even if the state legislature comes out, they would supersede whatever we put in the Pasco municipal code. So if we're bound to adhere to it at the state level, we would need to do it regardless of whether we banned it or not. So there's no objection. It just, I don't know. I simply just don't know. And it seems like regardless of what action we take, we land butter side up. So I agree that whatever we do though, should follow with the letter to the legislative body because that's, again, the right move. So that's, that's, that's my two cents. I really, I'm not for or against Serrano's motion. I just am for moving on from this topic so we can address important business.
Okay, so to briefly summarize, summarize what I've heard so far is I do not hear a majority of council at this time interested in moving this forward?
Well, I'd like to respond to Mr. Campos's.
Absolutely. Councilmember Serrano, I just want to make sure I summarize the conversation we've had right now, just to make sure that I'm, I'm hearing correctly so we can have further discussion on that. But currently, I'm not hearing a majority of council interested in moving it forward on a resolution. Councilmember Serrano, do you have any objection to the letter? Just to make sure I clarify on that point.
No objection to the letter. I think that, I appreciate what Mr. Campos had to say. I think we should take some action, whatever it is, plus the letter. Absolutely. The position that I'm advancing here, Mr. Campos, is simply this, that if the legislature passes the optionality, the option for an income tax, and that's what's, what's being pressed here. That's what Senate Bill 5554 by Hesse-Gaw was doing. It was allowing local jurisdictions to create an income tax on business and personal incomes, but there'd have to be offsets. And so it's not that the state legislature is going to mandate, as far as I perceive, a local income tax. But what they'll do is allow for one, which was constitutionally for 120 some odd years. It's not been constitutionally upheld. The problem is, in the past five years, we've had two courts of appeals address the issue. And they said, yeah, we think that might be the case. The Supreme Court was silent on it. They would not take these cases up. They have, without getting into it, they have the ability to say, no, we don't want to hear this. And so when they didn't speak on that, what it did was it allowed the door open. And we've heard this for the past five years. And quite frankly, I've sat by saying, you know, this is, this is the boogeyman, right? Well, and when we see our legislature that's actually trying to bring forward bills that say, we are going to permit local income taxes insofar as a jurisdiction offsets it, that to me is very concerning. And the reason I thought we ought to modify our code, and again, I'll be clear, the only reason I would, you know, suggest a resolution is to get staff direction so that we actually have the attorneys that work on this day to day writing the code so it's legally viable, so we don't get sued for Pete Serrano writing a code that's not correct, right? I don't want to take that liability on as a councilman. So ultimately, it was when I saw this bill, I said, oh crap, this is, this is real. We need to do something about this and not just tell our people that we're, we're opposed to it. Simply say, we ban this in the event that we're allowed to do it. And if some future council wants to take the action, they can repeal the ban and modify it accordingly. And that simply is what kicked me into high gear and thinking, this is serious and we need to take action this session. And so it sounds like it may die in committee. It may. It may not. And we don't know what the future is. So rather than letting Olympia direct us, or not direct us, but allow us to do something, why not take that action? And if we're opposed to it, it doesn't hurt anyone. We can simply, if we decide we want an income tax in six months, we can repeal it and say, the legislature's allowed us to do this. We're going to do this. Now, I don't see that happening. But the point is, by the legislature kind of allowing the boogeyman out, it's like now there's a real threat. And so why not do something for our citizens and say, in the event that the legislature allows us to do this, we oppose it, we ban it. If they force us to do something, then we'll address it then. That's, that's my take. And I, I'm like you. I don't want to talk about this for forever. Either let's let it die and have our positions made, that there's either value or not. Or let's adopt an ordinance that says, we will not do this, period.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Serrano. Mr. Campos.
Great feedback. It kind of clarified some things. So summarize and then I'm going to ask a question to Councilmember Torres. Staff has already told us several times that this would only take about 30 minutes of their total time. In essence, we've taken more time from staff talking about this than it would take them to draft the ordinance. Councilwoman Torres, what are your thoughts?
I say we can go ahead and move forward just for time's sake. Either draft and sign that, sign onto that resolution letter or option number four, which is the ordinance. I'm okay with that as well. Because as Councilmember Serrano mentioned, we can always be repealed later on if we need to repeal it.
And just for the record, I would note that I've heard that Councilmember Roach is, is opposed to moving forward with an ordinance or resolution as well. So I think that that's a member that's not with us as a body today. And so if you were taking a vote, obviously her vote wouldn't count. But given that it's a workshop discussion, I think it's relevant, salient to the conversation. And did you have any other?
Just to close, I, I'll support the resolution to move forward. Again, I would like to very much stop talking about this and move forward on other business. I don't disagree with Councilwoman Serrano. It really does nothing to harm us. It does, arguably, really doesn't do a lot of good either. But again, the good is that we can get this off our agenda and stop talking about it. And hopefully next time, it's a quick, let's adopt the resolution and move on. That's, that's my two cents. We've taken, again, quite a bit of staff time that could be spent doing other things otherwise. That's where I'm at with that.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Campos. City Mayor Zabel, does that give you sufficient direction? Or do you need us to summarize just to make sure?
Well, we had two, we had two suggestions for resolutions. We had a, we had a resolution. What I heard was we have four people in favor, or four councilmembers in favor of passing a resolution of some sort. So we had one option where it's just a statement, basically saying we're opposed to income tax. We have another one saying, we would like this codified, so let's get an ordinance and, and put that in our code that the, the city of Pasco City Council is not in favor of a local income tax. So I guess I, we need a little bit of clarity as to which, which resolution we're talking about.
Mr. Briggs, what was your recommendation again?
I believe it was just to adopt an ordinance. But do we need a resolution?
Right.
My understanding here, Mr. Briggs.
I guess you guys pin me for my legal advice, not my recommendations. But if you wanted that, I would say a resolution makes more sense here. Because the resolution isn't really dealing, ordinances deal more, and the code in general deal with operative language. Here, we're dealing with more of a statement of purpose or intent, which seems to fit more in that resolution type box. It's, it's, it would be odd to have an ordinance saying we're not going to do something. So I feel like that's, that's really not the role of an ordinance per se. I mean, I could, I could draft code to fit that. But to me, this fits more in the resolution box. It could be either, really. And I'm happy to go whichever direction council wants me to.
All right, well, I supported whatever lowest impact possibility. So I'm hearing resolution might be the best way. Is that, do you have nods? Do I have shaking your head? Because I would really like to move on to executive session so we can all get home.
I'd just like to clarify for Mr. Briggs, couldn't we just use a, an ordinance that's prohibitory? Even for the city on itself?
We could. We, we could do that. And so you're saying not modify the code then?
No, I would like to insert a section that says, you know, in Pasco, in PMC 3.25, we could address it. Maybe you and I should have a conversation offline.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, we could, we could certainly do that.
All right, we'll talk later.
All right, sounds good.
Councilman Campos, did you have a thought on what your intention was? I think you ended up being, we'll call it, you swing vote in this case. So is there a preference between a resolution or an ordinance for you, given the conversation from?
I'd just make a clear and direct comment to Councilmember Serrano. Given some consideration of this, I'd ask you to give some consideration to the best and easiest path forward as well.
I'm with you. My, my plan has always been to adopt a single sentence prohibition in PMC.
Correct. That's what I'm getting at. Your plan has always been to do something. The question to you is pointed directly to, would you consider, when you were working this out with Mr. Briggs, to have some flexibility in what you intend?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Zabel, does that provide you ample direction?
I believe so. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks. All right, with that, let's move on to item six, miscellaneous council discussion. City Mayor Zabel, do you want to kick us off?
I did not have anything for this evening.
Oh, well, catching me unawares. Any other council discussion they'd like to bring up during miscellaneous discussion? Mr. Zabel, I would like to bring up one thing that I've talked to, I believe you and some other staff members about. And that's in regards to potential, potentially putting a pause on some of our, oh gosh, was it the conversion of the hotels to the single residency occupancy units? The SROs. And I believe that we've had some conversation, I had some conversation with Director White, that given that we've had a number of motels and hotels that were in, that were, that have been proposed for conversion, but not a single one, I think, in the entire Tri-Cities that have been successfully done. That perhaps we want to take a brief hiatus on approving those until we have an opportunity to understand whether they're going to be best for our community or not. Especially given the areas, especially in Pasco, that those are currently impacting. So I would publicly say that to you, Mr. Zabel, that I'd be really interested in potentially a moratorium on those for a period of time until we get to see what those look like.
We can, we can pull together a workshop discussion on that for, for our next work, next available workshop. If that's satisfactory.
Absolutely.
Council's interested in that. I noted there was a pretty significant article on SROs on the Clover Island Hotel over the weekend in the Tri-City area.
Yeah, I'm reading a lot of sentiment, public sentiment that they're, they're very concerned, especially that we haven't had a successful development yet. We haven't had unsuccessful development. We just haven't simply had any, turned off across Tri-Cities. I don't know if the rest of the council is paying attention to this issue, but I would be interested in understanding a little more about that. All right. Any other miscellaneous discussion from council? Mr. Campos.
Director Rattke, I hate to do it. We got a lot of email traffic. Can you give a little bit of feedback on the ACA and what you're doing with the Humane Society? And discussion about the changes to the interlocal agreement from Mrs. Sorry, the name is, Carly Larkin.
Yeah, we'll have actually more updates on that after, beginning a couple of weeks in February, when we have a chance to meet with our ACA and interlocal agreement partners. We haven't had a chance to sit down with their partner cities to provide more details. I don't know if you have that or?
Yeah, the, the process of changing the interlocal is, obviously we have three cities involved. And I don't, I don't know to the extent that the other cities have even been engaged on this. All we've had right now, I think, is some verbal with some examples. And as I shared in an email over the weekend, what, I think what really is necessary for three city councils to start talking about changing their interlocal agreement is a concrete proposal. And so we'll be meeting with Ms. Larkin in the next couple of weeks as well to find out specifically what's on her mind. Kind of have a general concept, but we don't really have any specifics on how something that, like that might work, what the expectations would be, what the scope of the group is, what level of authority they'd want to have, what kind of access they'd need, how that impacts the contractor, those type of things.
Great. Well, I just want to say after reviewing some of the email traffic, Director Rattke, I want to commend you. It sounds like you are taking this to an initiative, making sure that she's being heard. And Deputy City Manager Adam Lincoln is also directly involved in this. And so this has got some attention to it. On the record, again, some of the email traffic, there was language used about maybe a back burner, and that's not happening here. So thank you for getting back to everybody.
Thank you for that. Any other miscellaneous discussion? Mayor Barajas, I can't see your hand raised, so I want to make sure you have the opportunity.
Do you have a comment for me?
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, let me jump back to my agenda. With that, we have, we do have need for an executive session. It's been a very executive session sort of month for us, Mr. Zabel. So we're looking at the consideration of the minimum offering price for sale or lease of real estate. If there's a likelihood the disclosure would decrease the price per RCW 42 dot 30 dot 1101C for 10 minutes. And it'll be attended by staff members, city manager, Director Rattke, and will the city attorney be joining us as well?
Yes.
And the city attorney. All right, with that, we have a need for a 10-minute executive session. I'm going to.
Sorry to interject here, Mayor Portam, but I would say that based on that Columbia Riverkeeper, the Port of Vancouver case, it is now abundantly clear that the factors affecting the price should be discussed outside of executive session. And the executive session itself should be limited solely to discussing what the minimum offering price should be based on those factors. It's kind of a weird distinction, but, but the court is clear that, that, that exception only applies to what the minimum offering price should be. And so we have, in other words, we have to have a brief discussion outside of the executive session regarding what the factors are that are going to affect the price. Then we go into executive session and discuss what the price should be.
All right, appreciate you bringing that forward before we adjourn to executive session. Mr. Zabel, can you discuss with us what factors?
I think the, the factors council would probably be most interested in would be use and the proposed use of surrounding property.
Price as well?
The, the proposed use of this property by the prospective buyer and the proposed use of the surrounding property the buyer is in control of already.
Would we also be interested in price or any other factors?
And price, of course, price.
All right, thank you, City Manager Zabel. Any other comments from, from our attorney? Want to make sure we're on the straight and narrow, given the landscape that we're under.
Right, we can actually talk about outside of the executive session, how those factors play into the price. We just limit the executive session solely to what the price ought to be based on those factors. So we can engage in some discussion here based on, you know, how those factors could affect the price. And then we go into executive session, discuss what the price should be rather briefly. And then once we establish that price, then we know what the minimum price is and we can negotiate on that, on that basis. Basically, the, the point of, of what the executive session is, is for is so that the general public does not know what our minimum offering price is, because then the general public's just going to offer that. If they know what our, what our bottom line is, what our walkaway price is, then they'll just offer that. Say, oh, you know, you want such and such amount per month. Okay, we're going to offer that for the lease. for, you know, um, uh, for the purchase price. So we can actually discuss the factors in greater detail outside of the executive session and then go in and just discuss what the price should be.
All right, thank you. Mr. Zabel, anything to add here, or are we ready to adjourn to executive session?
Yeah, I, I guess I would just add to that, after listening to the City Attorney's comments, that, uh, the proposed use is residential. And, uh, as is the vast majority of the surrounding property, including, uh, a portion of the wrecking yard, uh, to the north of this piece.
All right. Are we ready to, for executive session, Mr. Zabel?
Yes.
City Attorney? All right, so let me, let me go and reread it again, now that there's been a little bit of discussion here. So we're going to go to the executive session to, for the consideration of the minimum pro- offering price for sale or lease of real estate. If there's a likelihood that the disclosure will just, would decrease the price for RCW forty-two dot thirty dot one one zero one C, uh, we'll adjourn for ten minutes. Um, I will add a few minutes on there for a break, because we've all been sitting here for quite some time. It'll be attended by the, the City Manager, um, our, um, Director Rattke and the City Attorney. So we'll adjourn for, uh, thirteen and a half minutes, and we'll reconvene at, at nine forty-five.